Good evening, everyone. This is the City of Pleasantville City Council Work Meeting. Today is February 21st, 2024. The time is now 6:31. This meeting has been duly advertised in a city newspaper in performance with the Open Public Meetings Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Roll call, please. Davenport.
Present.
Fama Lara.
Here.
Camona.
Present.
Correa.
Present.
Barclay.
Present.
Auguste.
Present.
Thomas.
Present.
All in attendance. Approval of previous minutes? Can I give? Can I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Motion, yes. Roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any one opposed? CNN? Agenda review, Democrat? Of course, when we agenda these four items, we'll be doing open offices after you all approve of them in regular session, starting with Resolution 38 authorizing the promotion of police captain to Angelo Malanado. Resolution 39 authorizing the promotion of police lieutenant Louz Grushen. Resolution 40 authorizing the promotion of police sergeant to Astrid Arellis. And Resolution 41 authorizing the promotion of police sergeant to Marlon Hernandez. Any questions, please? Next is orders number two. Public hearing will be held during regular session to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap back. Any questions? CNN? Resolution 28 authorizing a community highway safety grant application available from the New Jersey Office of Highway Traffic Safety. Any questions? CNN? Resolution 29 approving the submission of a grant application and execution of a grant agreement with the United States Department of Transportation for Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability Equity Grant. Any questions? Madam President? Okay, I'm sorry. Madam BA, can you just let me break a little bit?
Certainly. For those of you who may not know, approximately 15 years or so ago, when he demolished the old Pleasantville High School and built the new high school and the middle school on Mill Road, in that project, there was supposed to be a pedestrian bridge to take our pedestrians, specifically our young people, across the expressway going Route 9 to safely get to and from school. Due to some funding issues or constraints some decade ago, the city was unsuccessful in completing that project. And now there is money out there through the Rebuilding America Infrastructure Sustainability and Equity Grant, which is really just an infrastructure grant through the federal government, where the City of Pleasantville now qualifies for 100% funding to seek the money to get that pedestrian bridge built. So this is a resolution supporting the city's application to the state for the pedestrian bridge.
Thank you. Does that mean that it's ran as 100%, you know, that we're going to get it? Or this is just put in the application?
Good question. No, we are, we have to compete for it, but we 100% qualify based on the criteria.
Any other questions? CNN? Resolution 30 authorizing the assignment of municipal lien certificates to Benjamin Franklin Capital LLC. Any questions? CNN? Resolution 31 authorizing assignment of municipal lien certificate to Access Divers and Recovery LLC. Any questions? CNN? Resolution 32 authorizing the city to enter into an interlocal service agreement with Atlantic County to perform an aerial application of pesticides for mosquito control. Any questions? CNN? Resolution 33 directing the planning board to conduct an investigation to determine whether certain properties in the areas of Hampton Court, East Bayview Avenue, East Edgewater Avenue, Oakland Avenue, and East Greenfield Avenue may be designated as an area in need of redevelopment as defined in NJSA 48:12A-6 of the Local Redevelopment and Housing Law. Any questions?
Hey, can you explain that just so they understand?
Certainly. So currently, we're speaking about the same area where the old high school is, which is considered the Lake Bay redevelopment area for the City of Pleasantville. As you, some of you, we hope that you would take the time to go over in that area. We're actually beginning construction of the old Joker's Field, which is our Green Acres site, which is under construction for a car that is going to be an attraction for the City of Pleasantville. However, that area is considered the city's Lake Bay redevelopment area. And the redevelopment plan was done some time ago. And since the initial redevelopment plan, there have been some updates. But as we sit and look at that area again because of flooding and other issues that are taking place back there, we want to revisit that redevelopment plan to see if there's room for expand.
Madam President? Resolution 34 authorizing execution of an access easement, I'm sorry, with Savas Collaborations LLC with regard to the California Avenue redevelopment project. Any questions? CNN? Resolution 35 authorizing execution of a memorandum of understanding between Atlantic County Improvement Authority and the city for the Community Development Block Grant, CB Fines. Any questions? CNN? Resolution 36 authorizing execution of a second amended memorandum of understanding with Keyshaff Real Estate Development LLC to exceed the time to negotiate a redevelopment agreement and an agreement of sale for certain city-owned properties located within the city's center redevelopment area. Any questions?
Just a comment, please.
Yes.
So this resolution is asking for an extension for another 180 days. And this is not due to any issues of the redeveloper. We had the holidays, the Christmas holidays. We did a transition of professionals and some other things that transpired at the planning board side, which held up some of the time as we were working throughout this redevelopment agreement. So we think it's fair to give the redeveloper another 180 days so that we can work through those particulars.
Thank you. Any other questions? CNN, Madam President? Resolution 37 support for suitability of cannabis business Happy Tree Pharmacy LLC. Any questions? CNN? Next is review of the bills.
Hang out in the way, let everybody else sit down. Good evening.
Good evening.
Let me go over to page between last council meeting and this council meeting. If you go to page one of that list, you'll see that there were, one of the bills were to the county cash park. They had not sent us the bill for October, so we paid that to the last council meeting now. And go to page two. We have two, a couple debt service payments. We have payroll, we have benefits for medical, and the county tax bill, $1,001,12. Bills that wouldn't be approved for tonight, most of them are operating bills. If you go down bottom page one, it's our normal trash collection bill for any county utility authority. If you go to page two in the middle, we have Senate contracts for the cleaning of the fire department in the Bay Area room that is processed and will probably start within a week or so. Once they're done, check what we send out to them, which is approved. On top of page three, you'll see a big number, 1439. That was for four police cars that we purchased. We ordered them prior to October. They came in in January for 143. Then if you skip over onto page three to five, you'll see, one more time. Page five to MAE, about $90,000. On page four, right in the middle, municipal enterprise, page four, $90,000. The first number, 143, is only for the purchase of the cars. The $90,000 that outfit them for everything that builds in the police car, computers, lights, the cage, everything that goes on for that. This was all part of the capital improvement plan that we did last August. Like I said, the cars were ordered in October, November, and they finally ended dollars of debt service that we collect on their behalf and they paid a debt service bill. That's why it's 14. The rest is normal, operating bills. Any questions?
Any questions, council? CNN? Thanks, Mr. Moody. Next, we have public portion on agenda items only. Anyone from the public would like to speak about agenda items?
Hi, y'all. How y'all doing?
Hello. All right.
Good. My only issue is with Resolution 32 about the insecticide spraying over our area. I don't believe that's a good idea. There is many animals and wildlife that are out there. Not only that, but a lot of people are not educated or given enough information in our area, and they are outside during the times of these sprains. It's not safe. And people are getting sprayed, animals are getting sprayed. And I have seen this by growing up in this community. Half a century, I've seen many animals and many people come out with birth defects, animals that are mutilated when they're born. It kills off many of our wildlife, the ecology, I should say, also. And I think we should reevaluate this. It's no more running behind the scooter truck anymore like we did before when we were younger. It's horrible. It's not a good idea. I know we can find another way that's going to be better to our society and to the ecology if we could work on that some way. I mean, I kind of talked to the mosquito guy on these issues because I was looking for the lanternfly, larva, and the ecology at the end of my street, which is Conover's Tributary. And I was down there looking for the box turtles. I know this is all crazy, everybody's thinking. And sorry, I'm sorry, but our ecology is dying. And that's pretty bad because the ecology used to come halfway up my street to my house. So I really think we need to rethink this. If we could, please, if it has to come to your community meetings that you have on Tuesdays, do you still have them?
Yes.
Maybe I'll come with some information for you that we can bring to just the meeting because this is bad. This is bad for people. Somebody sit on a car, somebody touches the car handle, guess what? They're touching their mouth, touching everything, just like COVID. So, thank you.
What about here? Can you just state your name, please?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I just usually call Ms. Newmark.
I wanted to say that, but...
Ms. Featon! Carol Cassano from Newmark Avenue. Thank you.
Ms. Page, I have a question.
Thank you.
When did they start doing the spraying?
So, I don't know the timeframe when we can find that out, but they just do not come out and just spray. So it has to be a severe case of it. And usually, they would be, the residents in that area would contact the county to say that there's an issue to have them come out. So I don't think we have any designated areas. There has to be a call for it. But I can get more information just so everybody's aware. But there's not just a time that they just go out and just spray.
Yes.
He does come and he, he does test the water at the end of the street to see if there is any larva in there that should not be there, just for, you know...
And Ms. Page, as far as with the lanternfly, I know we dealt with that last year. Are they going to come back and revisit that again?
We are. There's been, I guess, an extension of that grant, and we plan to apply for an extension.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
Hello. My name is Michelle Sinai. I was here last month talking about Lake Bay. And thank you so much. I was really happy and proud to see that I was heard. I just wanted to just read a letter and reference to what I was sending to Johnson and Correa Burt. He gave me his card after the meeting. I sent an email to him this morning. And I also have some footage of last Tuesday. I could not leave my house for five hours due to the flooding. That was a 10:45 pipe tie, and I couldn't leave my house until 2:00. So I got hit from the canal. I have pictures of the backyard, as I explained to you, that I can see the playground, what the walking track's going to be, and I have proof of flooding that from my, from the canal not being cleaned out in the back of my home, from the bed, we need something to protect us on the bay and clean out the canal. So the flooding, I have it up to the houses where you guys bought the back property, and it's up in the waters, up to the fences, up to the property that's being provided in the new playground. I'm watching it closely because it's an investment, and I would like to see the investment prosper. Helps me too. So this is a letter that I wrote. "My husband and I are new residents of Pleasantville. I might have the pleasure of meeting you all last month. City Council meeting. I spoke with my frustration living on Lake Bay. The council met for me that this wasn't an agenda item. It was the first meeting I attended, and I was not familiar with the protocol yet. At the end of my meeting, you were kind enough to introduce yourself to me and offer me a business card I greatly appreciate it, and I do. I see the topic redevelopment in the Lake Bay area is on my agenda for today's meeting. I am unsure of this topic. You put in problems, current homeowners on East Edgewater Avenue are experiencing. I hope it does. My primary concern is related to the flooding. My street and my property flood regularly on full moon. I have to follow it." It's a lunar moon, loon moon, whatever moon. I've never met, served, heard of any moons. There were so many. I actually, I actually bought, actually, the children bought binoculars for Christmas that go to my island if I can make this. Anyway, my street and my property flood regularly on full moon, which lasts up for five days, usually three days before and two to three or four days after per month. Last, down, the last Tuesday, as I said, the high tide came in with a 30-mile winds. And on top of that, it was unexpected to be 4.7. Ended up being seven inches. My whole backyard was underwater. And that's when I saw that it was going up to the property, the playground, where I saw the dinosaur, I can tell my neighbor has friends with that balls. Not to mention during storms, worse during storms. Our safety is compromised. Movement is implicated in our properties, including our cars, are at risk. We are in close proximity to the marina. I have been observed water breaching the marina and water so deep that anything not nailed down is rushed away by the current. And as I said, I have three videos. I have one of the street being ripped up, showing the layers of the potholes that are in the street that are two blends of two houses. Properties in my home are usually 30 by 100, figure out 60 feet of a house of the street is being, is completely ripped up. I mean, I am like, if you're in a G, it's even worse, but that's my friend's. But it is unbelievable. And I have a picture of the no outlet sign. It's about as big as your plats. So people who come down our street that aren't familiar. The only people I like seeing is the presence of the Pleasantville Police. I will grant them. They are exceptionally on there. They are on top of, come down my street, they're on top of being a municipal building. I see the police presence, and I feel safe in my home. And I'm hoping I still see extra police presence, and they should be paid for and be taken care of because they're doing their job. Because we're going to need it if we're back there for a new park. We make sure that there's no riff ramp back there. That's my one concern. So I feel the safety of that will be taken care of by the police car because they are very, they're great on top of stuff. I'll give them that. And I feel very safe here, and I'm put off here.
Excuse me. You want to finish reading your letter because actually your time's up, but I don't have...
This is mine here. "My neighbors and I are on East Edgewater. We help manage the flood waters, fixing the stewards, storing up to shoreline, closing up the canals that run from the marina behind our house. The canals are overgrown. It's currently state." I already said that. "If the challenge of water prevents to have current residents or not to scope in on the investigation, the investigation I'm asking that you are doing, I just want to know what broaden the scope of it includes. Otherwise, if it can be seen, open, separate topics by the Lake Bay neighbors, and we greatly appreciated by that. Looking forward to spend our time in here, but our confidence is shaken, and we don't want to be, we want to be, it's a beautiful place to live here. It's gorgeous every day in a gin and jam. We'll contact, you know, free to receive. But I just want the water, even if you build a wall, with the alley to govern at Harbor Beach, something to restrain that water from coming down and then draining the canal is the most important thing so we can keep our home and help me with my home insurance rate. I can't even get insurance in a 10 by 10 area." Thank you so much for listening to me. I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Is there a way I can get? Can you write your phone?
I wrote my phone number down.
Is it on there?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'll follow up.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else from the public would like to speak? Have a motion to, you come to speak? Hello, ma'am.
I was outside.
Okay, so it's a word on public portion and it's on agenda items only.
Okay, so is this an agenda item about residents that live in Lake Bay?
None.
But you can't speak.
You can't speak.
Okay. No, 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 not now, at the end.
At the end. Okay, so we're charged. Okay. That's what we try and go back to.
Please sign in your name, please, and we'll call you for the portion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? CNN? May I have a motion to close the public portion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed? CNN? The council, any discussion? Counsel, any discussion? May I have a motion to close work session?
Motion, second.
Second by Councilman Camona. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone to vote? CNN? This is the City Council, this is City of Pleasantville City Council meeting. Today is February 21st, 2024, and the time, I mean, I'm sorry, 21, 2024. The time is 6:55. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city newspaper in performance with the Open Public Meetings Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Please stand for invocation by Pastor Jerome Page in the flag room, please.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, Madam President. Normally, when you open up with the invocation, it's the Lord's Prayer. I want to share with you tonight that I'm going to pray, but it's going to be Jesus' prayer. Okay? And for everybody that's sitting up there, you are there because of the Lord. Yeah, votes happen and whatever, but you're there, president, mayor, businessman, all of you. You're there because of God. So let's go to God in prayer. Before Jesus went to the cross, he prayed to his Father. My prayer is that for them alone, is not just for them alone. I pray also for those who will believe in me through their message, that all of them may be one. Father, just as you are in me and I am in you, may they also be in us so that the world may believe that you have sent me. I have given them the glory that you have given me, and that they may be one as we are one. I in them and you in me, so that they may be brought to the complete unity. Then the world will know that you sent me and have loved them even as you have loved me. Father, I want those you have given to me, given me, to be with me where I am and see my glory, the glory you have given me because you love me before the creation of the world. Righteous Father, though the world does not know you, I know you, and they know, they know that you have sent me. I have made you known to them and will continue to make you known in order that the love you have for me may be in them and that I myself may be in them. Heavenly Father, thank you for this prayer.
With that being said, Mr. Page, I'd like for everyone to just take a moment's silence for the census board that's going on over in Palestine and the Ukraine. So with that being said, can we have a moment's silence for those people that are getting killed over there?
And also, there was two young little kids that was drowned up in a, on a beach in Florida, and they passed away.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands before me. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Present.
Fama Lara?
Here.
Camona?
Present.
Correa?
Present.
Barclay?
Present.
Auguste?
Present.
Thomas?
Present.
All in attendance. Thanks for reading of the previous minute. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor? Commissions? Proclamations? Presentations? Okay. I'll be right first. Okay, so, I'm sorry. Oh, she's doing, oh, yeah. You want to do a motion for me?
Yeah.
We'll do a, then, and then, five. So we're going to approve, I mean, vote on them, and then we're just going to follow the agenda. So number one, we got Resolution 38, mayor?
Yes.
Authorizing the promotion of police captain to Angelo Malanado. You have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Roll call. Roll call, Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Lara?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Auguste?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 39 authorizing the promotion of police lieutenant to Louz Grushen?
Motion.
May I have a motion?
Second.
I already used you, Barclay. Roll call, Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Lara?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Auguste?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 40 authorizing the promotion of police sergeant to Astrid Arellis?
Motion. Second.
Roll call, Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Lara?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Auguste?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 41 authorizing the promotion of police sergeant to Marlon Hernandez? May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Roll call, please. Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Lara?
Yes.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Auguste.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Next, we have the office of officers for promotions, police promotions done by Mayor Moore.
Is this?
Okay, good evening, everyone, this is the office of Angela Malinato. Okay, Pete, I give it to you. State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic. I.
Angelo Malinato.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And the government established.
And the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Of the police, of the police captain.
Of the police captain for the City of Pleasantville.
Okay. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
To help me guide.
To help me guide.
Yes.
Angelo, turn to the side.
No, he wants to turn.
So I'd like to introduce my family, my wife, Jerry, my oldest aunt, my youngest, Elaine. I'd like to thank everyone that was a part of this. First of all, I'd like to thank the Lord Jesus Christ, because without him, this would not be possible. The humble service of the Lord and of everyone here, the residents of Pleasantville, and I thank you so much, and I will do my best to make everyone happy.
Amen.
Congratulations. Can you see them all?
Got it.
Yeah, it seems beautiful. Okay, and this is the office of Luz Gresham. State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic. I.
I, Luz Gresham.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And the government established.
And the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And partially.
Partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Of the pleasant, excuse me, of the police lieutenant.
Of police lieutenant.
For the City of Pleasantville.
For the City of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
To help me guide.
My dad, Steve Gresham, my mom, Luz, my son, Christopher, and my other son, Johnny. I think everybody in this room may have left them already. I would like to say thank you to God for putting me on this path that led back to Pleasantville. I'm thankful for it every single day. For everybody in this room, all the people who came from near and far, not just for me, but for all of us. It really means the world. Thank you.
And next, we have Astrid Arellis. Major.
Mayor.
We gotta turn.
You gotta come to the middle.
Public portion. Okay, Pete, I give it to you. Office of State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic. I.
I, Astrid Arellis.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And the government established.
And government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And partially.
Partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Of police sergeant.
Of police sergeant.
For the City of Pleasantville. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
To help me guide.
First of all, thank you to God for allowing me to be here. I have plenty of moms. My mom right here, second mom, and my first mom, Caitlin, second mate, my right hand, right here, Edison. All I would like to thank is City of Pleasantville, and also everyone who made this possible for me, and you know who you are, and I appreciate every single one of you guys who've been here.
Okay, we have Marlon Hernandez, he could wait. I'm trying to get you to sit in here. So, step up all the way. This is Marlon Hernandez, he has to be the office of State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic. I.
I, Marlon Hernandez.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And the government established.
And the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of pleasant, excuse me, of police sergeant.
Of the duties of the police sergeant.
All the duties of the office of police sergeant.
All the duties of the office of police sergeant.
For the City of Pleasantville. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
To help me guide.
To help me guide.
Chief, I think I need you.
I'm just glad to introduce you to my family here, my roommates. My son, my two sons, and my daughter, Valentina, my wife, Marcella. Thanks for everyone for being here today, appreciate you guys. Thanks for all my coworkers and friends that have had here today. That's it.
Real quick, everyone, thank you for all the officers that came out here today. I mean, this is a really big showing for the people that are getting promoted. Thank you for friends and families for coming up for these officers. These are a great bunch of officers, the ones that are getting promoted, I'm so proud of them. One of the other things that I'm very, very proud of, that I was here to see, twenty-four years ago when I was hired here, it was two females here, just two. Right now, we have about eight, nine. From captain down to sergeant, trooper. I am extremely proud of that.
Yes.
These female officers are making a mark in the Pleasantville Police Department. So once they got promoted, can you come up? The council wants to have you up here to have a picture.
Group picture.
Mayor.
Yeah. You guys probably need to get your back up.
Everybody here on three? One, two, three, go. We're a good-looking crew. Hold on, hold on, hold on. In-house talk.
I'm not gonna get the picture.
I'm gonna send it to you right now.
Order number two, public care required, exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits, and establish a cap thing. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
This is public, oh, I'm sorry, that's okay. Anyone from the public would like to speak on order number two? Seeing no one? Close public care. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Roll call. Motion for roll call, please.
No motion.
Second.
Roll call. Davenport?
Yes.
Kamala?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Auguste? Thomas?
Yes.
Order is adopted. Resolution twenty-eight, authorizing the community highway safety grant application available from the New Jersey Office of Highway Traffic Safety. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Davenport?
Yes.
Kamala?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Auguste?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution twenty-nine, approving submission of a grant application and execution of a grant agreement with the United States Department of Transportation for rebuilding America infrastructure with sustainability and equity grant.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please. Davenport?
Yes.
Kamala?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Auguste?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution thirty, authorizing the assignment of a municipal lien certificate to Benjamin Bradley Capital LLC. May I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Roll call, please. Davenport?
Yes.
Kamala?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Auguste?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution thirty-one, authorizing the assignment of a municipal lien certificate to Access, Diapers, and Recovery LLC. May I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Roll call, please. Davenport?
Yes.
Kamala?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Auguste?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution thirty-two, authorizing the city to enter into an interlocal service agreement with Atlantic County to perform an aerial application for specific sites for mosquito control.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Rocco, please.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Lara?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Auguste B.?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution thirty-three, directing the planning board to conduct an investigation to determine whether certain properties in the areas of Hampton Court, East Bayview Avenue, East Edgewater Avenue, Oakland Avenue, and Greenfield Avenue may be designated as an area in need of redevelopment as defined in NJSA forty-eight, colon, twelve, eight, dash, six of the Local Redevelopment and Housing Law.
May I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Rocco, please.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Lara?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Auguste B.?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution thirty-four, authorizing the execution of Access East Smith with Savage Collaborations LLC with regard to the California Avenue redevelopment project.
May I have a motion?
Thank you.
Rocco, please.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Lara?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
No.
So noted. Barclay?
Yes.
Auguste B.?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution thirty-five, authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding between Atlantic County Improvement Authority and the city for the Community Development Block Grant CB funds.
May I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Rocco, please.
Barclay. Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Lara?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Auguste B.?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution thirty-six, authorizing the execution of a second amended memorandum of understanding for Key Sham Real Estate Development LLC to exceed the time to negotiate a redevelopment agreement and agreement of sale for certain city-owned properties located within the city center redevelopment area.
Motion.
May I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Rocco, please.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Lara?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Auguste B.?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution thirty-seven, supporting the suitability of Cannabis Business Apertory Pharmacy LLC.
May I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Rocco.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Lara?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Auguste B.?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. I need a motion to approve the builders?
Motion, second.
Rocco.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Lara?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Auguste B.?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution, I mean, motion approved. I need a motion to approve bingo license?
Motion, second.
Rocco.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fama Lara?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Auguste B.?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion approved. Next is public worship. Everyone sign if you need to speak. If you sign.
Are you married yet?
Yes, yes.
Oh, you're good.
Thank you. Miss Carol?
I'll let them go first, since I went first, Newmark.
It doesn't matter.
Oh, okay. Okay, hello again. Carol from Newmark Avenue. Um, first of all, I want to thank you, Ms. Paine. I left a message on your machine. It's about the Public Works. I want to give them a high five. I caught up on all the YouTube of the meetings and everything. I saw how they were getting stamped on, tramped on, about new vehicles and everything. Let me just say, there's a retention pond behind my house. Crack people are coming there at the beginning of the month and the end of the month when they get their money. They sit in there, they get drunk, they get high. You can ask the man that lives down that way, I'm not saying any names, but they have broken into his yard, they were stealing his water, his electricity on the outside. So, when they get done there, they work their way down to my house. So then I have locks on my water on the outside. I also have locks on my electric on the outside. I can't get them, the police, the police do come out, make me look like an idiot because when I call nine-one-one, someone gives them the heads up somewhere or they have a radio or something that they, I don't know how it works nowadays, but they're gone just like that. They hop over the fence, you hear them and they're gone. I can't get them on camera, but this is insane. I mean, my dogs take their own things, they're offensive, poison my animals. They've done graffiti, they've even sprayed pepper spray on my house. This is just not acceptable. I mean, I've never had this in the fifty years I've lived in Pleasantville. And, I mean, I'm not scared of them. I mean, because I've lived here in Pleasantville, I mean, we're not scared. I mean, but still, this is plausible. We've never had this kind of thing happen at that end of Pleasantville. I mean, besides the number one toxic landfill in the United States. Okay, versus landfill. My second issue is the Public Works, they came out, they did a wonderful job of cleaning out that retention pond back there. They were super. Not a complaint from them, they didn't knock on my door or anything saying, hey, we're going down here to do this for, you know, your complaints. It was beautiful. Because I tried to go in there, talk to the boss, get him to do it, the person that owns the land there. So, thank you to the head of the Public Works and everyone who works there. I thank you all. And the lady who gave me a call back also, she was wonderful. She also explained to me how the house on the side of me, who you can also see right through the house, from the roof is all caved in. All that's standing is four walls. And they go hang out there at night, music playing till four o'clock in the morning. I can, it seems like I can get no peace. So, also, I want to thank the police officers too for running out to my house to try to catch these people. I mean, they're probably thinking, oh my God, is the looney calm again, you know? And I hate to waste resources that way, but if I could get out there and do that myself, I can chase anybody. So, I thank the police officers also. I mean, there's a lot of work they have to put up with. And I mean, we need more police officers, more public work people. I know we got a lot here in Pleasantville. I did have a chance to go to an App Seeking Council meeting and I learned a lot over there. I mean, boy, is the dress different on that side. So, I learned a lot over there. So, I would like to ask to get rid of the crackheads on Main Street. A lot of the trap houses. If I know about them, I'm sure you guys all know about them. I mean, and I'm just an everyday citizen. There is one right next to a church. How bad is that for Pleasantville? What does that say? Bill Martin's wonderful historical place in Pleasantville. You drive, I'm sorry, you drive past there and there's
Just wrap it up, Miss Carol.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. You walk past, you walk or drive past there, there's five people sitting out in the front of there, even handicapped people. I'm sorry. Then you gotta strike, you gotta get them off our street. No one wants to come to Pleasantville, I'm sorry.
How about Jojo's, the restaurant?
Oh, yeah. You get accosted by hand handlers everywhere you go in Pleasantville. I'm sorry.
Even City Hall, out here, police department, right out in the parking lot.
So, if we all work together, come up with a plan, it would be wonderful. Thank you very much for your time, everyone.
Thank you.
So, please if I have to reiterate what I just spoke about, or any other concerns I have. My only thing is I wanted to know, just I wanted, if there's any way that I can be a part of what, or find out what the investigation entails for the next phase? And I guess once that's displayed, is there any way that the public can have any, like, a voice? I know that they are, I mean, it's giving funding for sewers and she said we're blocked by Hurricane Sandy, which I was told that we lost, is it forty-four homes, I think we lost?
Forty, yeah.
You know, we lost forty-four homes back in the ride. My main thing is, how do we fix the sewers? So I don't have all this work coming up to my house. The canals definitely have to be done and the street. Because right now, I'm having a hard time getting homeowners on my home. I have renewing it and it's very costly. And from the zone that I'm in, if it was repaired, it might be not as expensive if they see that they come in and rezone it. Instead of being like an F-zone, if they can get to repair. I mean, even Blue Acres, I mean, we would like to speak to them as well because the homes that were taken over and bought by them, it's a flood. It's flooding into our homes. It's not draining, you know, from there, it's coming into our homes. And I think if you can help us with, you know, building a wall like they did in Egg Bar, or I hope we have the money in FEMA that they gave you the grant. I know there was two. One was last year and one was just given this year by, one was combined and one was with FEMA. So if you can help us and if you want, I basically, I volunteer my time, whatever you need me to do. You can call me, I am an honest person. And when I say I want to do something, I will. If you need me to do bowls, I will be there at the bowls. I've been a dinner clerk for twenty-seven years and I can't stay that way.
Excuse me, what's your name again?
Michelle Sinai.
Michelle Sinai, I'd like to come talk to you because we had something that we almost had in place to deal with the sewer problem, which I think would have, in the long run, been very good for the City of Pleasantville. So I definitely want to come and talk to you just that, you know, I can see where you're at and know what we're talking about, okay?
I did a two-hour walk every day for the perimeter of what we're doing, the park and the homes, for two hours because I couldn't find a job for four months when I first moved here. And I took a picture and saw every single sewer around the area where you're developing, including my own streets. And it's just frustrating, I figured if they were clean, we'd be able to have, you'd drain, you know?
It's too bad.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
Mary Beth?
That's me. Michelle and I live next door to each other. We moved in at the same time, she came from Philadelphia, I came from New York. And I always wanted to own home. And this is where I was able to afford one. And I even imagined that I was going to be able to have the blessing of having a pool by the water. That being said, we know, I knew, I knew it was ten out of ten flood zone. I thought that meant, you know, if there's a storm, you're gonna get flooded. One night, no storm, walked out of the house. Inundated, inundated, water everywhere. Not only in my property, like, my daughters couldn't even go out to use the grass and water all the way up to the marina. So, the marina is beautiful. I mean, how could you complain, right? But, you know, we're excited about this project, but we just hope that, like, somehow, like, we're gonna be okay. So, if you can share with us, like, how it's gonna be improved, not just like that these things are being built, but how the water is gonna be dealt with because the water is a problem. We, so, when we step out of our doors during the high tide, during the high, the full moon and got a bit of storm, we can't move. We can't move. We are locked in our driveways or our cars are on the street, the water is raised up to our cars. I just went and bought a higher car. And if we're, Michelle and I came home one day, we sat in a driveway for an hour and a half to wait just to get into the houses. And if, one night, she and her husband went out to dinner, I called them, I said, you guys can't come home because it, you can't make it down the street. So, you know, we like, you know, I made a joke, I was like, well, we want to live by the water. But it's beautiful, but it's, it's like, it's, it's, it's hard to deal with. It's hard to deal with. So, if we can get some help, because this is not something that we can do on like an individual basis, you know, this is like an infrastructure issue. So, we're excited about the, um, the marina and all the, you know, but, but you don't, we don't know what it entails and we don't know how it's gonna help us and if it's gonna help us. And if that project is not gonna help us, we were asked if there's an ancillary project that could help us too. And we're happy, we said, we watched a sunrise every day, sunset, no, we don't have sunrise people, we watch sunset every day. But thank you, we're very happy to be here, we really are. We just need some help. And, and, and we're excited about the project. I mean, it's awesome. It's beautiful here, it's underrated. And, you know, we're, being that we're both not from the area, when we tell people, oh, hey, we're from Pleasantville, then we, they're like, oh. We, we didn't know it was a bad thing. But it's not gonna be a bad thing. It's not gonna be a bad thing. It's gonna be, people are gonna be sorry that they didn't pick up on it, and I'm happy for that. Because we, I, I'm happy, I have a beautiful house, a beautiful space, just if we can get some help.
How long have you been in your house?
I bought November twenty-twenty-three and I came down in the spring. Oh, like
Oh, so just two years?
Not even.
Well, not even?
Yeah, yeah, not even.
Oh, really?
So, I don't think she mentioned this, but we have, um, right on you guys' website is like, report a pothole. We have a pothole that's not a pothole. This pothole is like a sinkhole. Like, you run from one side of the street to another, you can't even roll around it. And so, I reported, I reported a pothole right there. And it's only got, you know, it's just like, you just report it and that's it? Like, can it actually be dealt with?
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Which street is that?
East Edgewater. It's, it's, so that pothole, I swear, has been there since I bought in November twenty-twenty-three.
Okay.
No, twenty-twenty-two, pardon me.
Resident
Yeah, and I reported it, right on you guys' website. So we really need your help because our cars, you know, we can't get, it, 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 it spanned the whole street. So you can't even Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say something? For Christmas, I guess make sure to buy me an aqua suit. So I have a suit that has boots and a pant. Just, and we're actually thinking of getting a kayak. Case of a bird.
Can I, can I say something? I didn't sign, but I have a picture. I'm on Oakland Avenue, so I stopped all this water and it comes, and this is my picture.
But after the meeting?
Yeah. What is it?
After the meeting.
Oh, okay.
You need to show us.
After, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, because I wasn't gonna talk, I just wanted to come and listen, but it's really, really
But we're happy because, like, we see them across, you know, from us and this is all us, we're laysback.
Any comments? I need a motion to close Public Worship.
Motion, second.
Over by favor, bye. Mayor, any comments?
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. Say congratulations to all the officers that were promoted. I think they do a great job also. And we are doing the best we can to work with the amount that we have.[1717.52] And every municipality has its issues, I just wanted to, I wanted to say that I, I wanted to say you went to App Seeking, and I don't know if that was good or bad, the expression that you made, but they have their issues too, I talked to the mayor there. Public Works, yes, they do a good job, they work very hard over there, and they do a good job. But what I'm excited about with council is the, um, bridge, the raised bridge with students, you know, for safety pedestrians and students when they're trying to cross the expressway. Long way that's the last. Everyone have a good evening.
Yes, I want to say, I want to say congratulations to all the officers that have promoted, I want to thank everybody for coming out, you know, we've heard your concerns, and if we couldn't, you know, catch a lot better, hopefully we have concerns. Also, I have an update in future, not in the future, but a few months, we're gonna have law enforcement, parking, law, I mean, parking enforcement, it's gonna happen in Pleasantville, so you guys, and then you know now, park your car the right direction, because if you park in the wrong direction, you're gonna get a ticket. All right? Thank you. Have a blessed night.
Make it work out, come on, come on. Next week.
Next week? Okay, next week.
Good, put us number one.
We've been working, and we'll be continuing to work on some of the parks throughout the area, to upgrade them, to put in different facilities, and one of the things that is being done this year and will continue on is flag football, which gives the kids of this city something else to do, extends their playing time, and it's open to males and females, anybody who wants to play. Do you want to play?
Uh, yeah, I would love to. I forgot about the jokers, you know, we never see them out, like, collecting, we used to always see them at the lights and everything.
Oh, I do.
They do?
Oh, yeah.
Can you send them down our way? I mean, where the Dunk Donuts and CVSs is? I'm not joking, because like, joking.
We have Walgreens on, uh, Main Street, Delight Road, and I used to get, but I have not seen them.
We have not seen them in a year, I'm telling you.
We sent them here.
No, because we're not kidding, because we've been here since nineteen fifty-nine, and we have always contributed, and I just watched the last YouTube of this, of the city council, and I'm like, you're, you're right, I haven't seen those little kids in ages, all I see is, is the ones, the Greyhounds, but, I mean, not little kids.
We'll, we'll let you know, because they usually do two coin drops, is what you're talking about.
Yeah.
They usually do two a year, and we'll make sure that somehow we get the notice out to the public as to when it is and where it is.
Yeah, and, and the one I heard, what happened, they, they didn't get coats and all this stuff, and they won the championship, I was like, what?
Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out, congratulate all the police officer dedication and commitment service, I mean, finest, I believe, in the whole state if you, if you ask me, so. But I also chair the sewer committee now, and I hear a lot about the sewer, what, gonna, pretty soon we're gonna have a sewer committee coming up, but the more I hear about you complaining about the sewer, I think that's more like waters, like stormwater rather than sewer. We're still gonna bring it up a committee, and we're gonna see if it applies to it, and somehow we can, you know, work on your concern, but I think that's, I don't think this is a sewer issue, okay? A wall follow-up, okay? Thank you. This is normal, because it's, the water coming, yeah, okay. First of all, thank you all.
Thank everybody for coming out, and I just want to say congratulations to all the officers that have promoted. It's one thing that was good that we talked about, the redevelopment, getting it to happen down in the Lakesbank area, Open Aspen all over there, and the good things that we had in the redevelopment committee to enhance that area and make sure that it's accessible for the people of Pleasantville also.